Today is Monday, May the 2nd, and the time is 9:00 AM. The Board is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three Commissioners are present. Also with us is a room full of guests. Madam Clerk, are there changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, this morning we had the honor of opening our meeting with two employee recognitions. We're going to read the recognitions into the record and ask for any comments, and then we'll ask the recipients to come up here and we'll take a picture with you. Okay? First, we'll have Antonio Serio. I'm gonna ask Mr. Canyon if you'll read the commendation.
Absolutely, love to. This is one of the more illustrious ones I've seen. All right, Antonio Serio started his native, started life in his native land of Portugal, specifically the island of Madeira. Is it Madeira? All right, I got it right. Like so many Portuguese before him, Antonio was called to the sea. His naturally friendly demeanor coupled with the warm upbringing he had on Madeira primed Antonio for a career taking care of passengers on cruise ships. Wow. It was on those cruise ships that Antonio honed what would become his legendary white-glove personal customer service mindset. After years at sea, he found his way to Boise, into us. He did that with the gleam in his eye to bring what he perfected on the open ocean, treating his passengers like royalty, to government technology service. So began a journey that would span 25 years of life and service to the great state of Ada. Antonio Serio was hired on April 23rd, 1997, as a systems specialist for Ada County Sheriff's Office Emergency Communications Bureau. During his time there, he was promoted to IT Systems Engineer I in 2000, and then again to IT Systems Engineer II in 2008, when he was assigned to the Ada County Courthouse. From there, he moved on to become the IT Customer Operations Manager in 2015, and most recently to his current position as Ada County's first Deputy Director of IT in 2017. His most recent notable accomplishments really reflect his attention to customer service, both internal and external to county government. He spearheaded many pioneering advances in service offerings such as standing up Ada County's first 24/7 help desk, AV-YouTube, streaming of OBM, budget presentations, various department or office award ceremonies, and even proposed and designed the IT uniforms you see many of the IT folks wearing in courtrooms and other secure locations throughout the county. He did all of this and so much more over the years in the name of doing what is right for his customers and the county. Long ago, Antonio learned how so much of good service is in how you leave the person feeling that you just helped. If Antonio has ever helped you, you understand what this means. Antonio's attention to detail, personal touch, and good service is absolutely second to none. And there's more. He is a notable technologist at work, but also in his personal life. He has pushed the envelope of his own research and thirst for information to create a solar array and battery wall at his home. Eyebrows rising here. Rivaling that of Elon Musk. He built and manages a cloud-hosted data center that at times dims the lights at Amazon due to its sheer power consumption. He is well-known penny stock trader and crypto miner, and will gladly tell you all you need to do in order to be successful in either area. Don't worry, all this is above board, as many of the folks who come to him for advice in these areas are in law enforcement. He loves learning and loves to help, but above all, he is extremely dependable. Just don't make him late to lunch. Like many Europeans, he gets feisty even if he misses a break and his blood sugar drops. And sure, there were times when something unfortunate happened. Here we go, this is the not-so-good stuff. Like years back, when he bent over in the data center and switched off the wrong equipment with his backside, plunging the courthouse into 10 minutes of no networking. Or during the move from the old courthouse to the new one, when IT was moving a number of hard drives for the main servers and he mixed up which was which. God looked favorably on him that day, as fortunately, the systems figured it out for him. Being such a good person has its advantages, be it God or karma, or so it seems. All kidding aside, having Antonio with Ada County IT not only makes everyone who works here have a good experience with technology, but he also makes us better, simply by walking, being around, and seeing him and the examples that he sets. He is also there to help, always with a smile and always ready. Antonio did not set the bar, he is the bar. We should get T-shirts that say that. The fact that he refuses to teach any of us to swear in Portuguese is his only known flaw. He could always work on that, but then nobody is perfect. Thank you, Antonio, job well done. Thank you for your hard work and being an inspiration to all of us. Thank you. All right. I think that deserves like a standing ovation.
Oh, yeah.
Where's Omira?
Omira's sick today.
Are you going to?
Speech, yeah.
But we have this Steve is going to fill in for the other Steve.
Yes, so Steve asked me to say a few words.
Oh, great.
Gladly. Antonio has been just a fantastic, he's kind of a perfect example of customer service, just are really willing to run around and do whatever he needs to do to get. He's also really nice, which it's nice to work with nice people. And he's an Apple guy, so you gotta like the guy that likes Apple. So, thank you for your years of service, you do fantastic work.
Thank you. Is there anyone else would like to add a few words? Yeah, go ahead.
Sure. I've asked Antonio to do just about as many things as you can possibly ask over the course of time. Whether it's standing out in the rain, picking up tents, or you know, figuring out complicated wiring for the trailer and other things, Antonio's been amazing. He's not just customer service, like he really bends over backwards to make things work, even problems that seem impossible. But, thank you, Antonio, you do much, appreciate it.
Thank you. And congratulations for your 25 years in the great state of Ada.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we'll move on, and then we'll take some pictures. You can bring your, anybody, anyone up with, that you brought with for this. Today, we have another award. Tyler Leonard. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Davidson if he'll read the synopsis.
Where's Tyler?
Right there.
Okay. This is for 20 years of service. Once upon a time, a long time ago, in the dark and loud call center, Tyler Leonard worked hard troubleshooting printers. Call centers are designed to handle lots of calls, and operators need to have these principal qualifications: be proficient and brief. Tyler mastered the first principle very well, but the second was a struggle. As such, he was not happy and began looking around for opportunities. On May 28th, 2002, he started at the county. He was responsible for supporting the prosecuting attorneys, purchasing, HR, and risk, and later, he started supporting the Board of County Commissioners. Tyler was very good at troubleshooting any technical issues that popped up. His technical skills were impressive, but more than that was his customer service reputation. Tyler's customers loved him. He took pride in the work and helped customers understand technology. This experience and drive elevated his skillset and knowledge very quickly, and in 2013, he took on a new position: Systems Engineer I. In this position, Tyler managed high-end storage systems and server infrastructure, keeping the county running efficiently. Once again, Tyler continued mastering all technical challenges presented to him, but this time, his growth wasn't just the technical. Tyler helped other new engineers learn and grow in their respective skills. This willingness to help his peers caught the eye of his manager, Kent Herr, who quickly recognized Tyler's leadership skills. In September of 2018, Tyler was promoted to Systems Engineer III, and then Team Supervisor in September of 2020, where he continues to provide a high level of leadership and customer service. We are very proud of Tyler, as he has been a steadfast customer advocate representing IT in the best light possible. Thank you, Tyler, for everything you do. Don't worry about still working on brevity, nobody is perfect.
Okay, I guess Steve is gonna make some comments.
Sure, I don't know Tyler at all. I've never worked with him. Steve Omira said, again, one of the really guys in his shop. I am glad that we have the backroom guys that work in closets downstairs to make all this stuff, get all the work. And I love that he started at the bottom and worked his way up. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I think that this is just a reflection of the IT department and how important you are to all of us. You're sort of the backbone to the entire county. We wouldn't function without you, and it's your type of leadership. Both of you, 20 and 25 years respectfully, that get us where we need to go every day. And knock on wood, we haven't had any cybersecurity issues or problems, and you guys just do, as irritated as I get, having to take all those tests. You guys do a fabulous job, and thanks for being the face of IT and the face of Ada County. Really appreciate it from the Board.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate your service to the great state of Ada.
Fix your time.
Is there anybody else who wants to say anything? We'll start with Antonio, and then we'll, so anybody that you have, that you might wanna stand with you?
Do one with the Board, and then look at the whole team up there.
Not only once.
Not only once. Okay?
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations, sir. Congratulations. Thank you.
We'll do one just with the Board, and then we'll have all you guys up there.
Okay. Congratulations.
You got it. There you go.
All right, so one up?
One up.
Okay, everybody.
Everybody. We're gonna have to move our ways. Finally, you gotta come on this side.
Yeah, just stand in front. You're gonna have to stand in front, you're gonna have to come stand in front. Yep.
There you go.
There you go.
There you go.
Is that good?
We'll make it work.
My phone.
Got it?
All right, yay.
All right. Now it's time.
Oh, you're standing.
There you go. One up. Yep. Congratulations. 20 years of service.
I don't know what you're camera looking at.
There you go. Congratulations.
All right, come on up.
Now you're all through again.
Same thing, same place.
You know all these guys?
Sometimes.
Okay. All right, go ahead. Thank you. Thank you.
Anthony's like a bodybuilder.
Right. Got a good grip, for sure.
Well, that's fun. Thanks, everybody.
Good morning.
Morning.
Can we help you? All right. May have motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
Mr. Chair, I move to move the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'll second that.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. Is all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
We now have before us the award of bid 22049, Ada County Landfill NRC 4 liner drain gravel.
Exciting stuff, that's why Tom's here.
That's right. Tom's here for two of our projects today, and the first one being the award of bid 22049. The evaluation team has evaluated the bids that were received, and would like to submit a recommendation for award letter for your consideration.
If you could read the letter in the record?
I'd be happy to. Letter dated May 2nd, 2022, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid 22049. Dear members of the Board, after reviewing the bid submitted, it is a recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid 22049 to Knife River Corporation, Mountain West, as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of $1,498,000.
Okay.
Tom, you excited?
Very.
Good.
Knife River, they got plenty of big trucks, don't they?
They do, they have a few.
Yeah, they have a few.
Oh, yeah. Big outfit, yeah. All right.
I'd make the motion if you're ready, Ms. Chair.
I'll keep the motion.
Yes, I'll move to go ahead and accept the recommendation of the evaluation committee and award bid 22049, Ada County Landfill NRC 4 liner drain gravel, to Knife River Corp, Mountain West, in the amount of $1,498,000.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Knife River. Okay, we have another item that we need to discuss. Bid, opening of bid number 22056, Ada County Landfill North Ravine Cell Topsoil Stripping.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We received one response for bid 22056, Ada County Landfill North Ravine Cell Topsoil Stripping Project, and our Bonfire E Procurement System is queued up, and if you're ready for us to open, we'll proceed.
We're ready.
All right. Chair, Commissioners, today we're looking for the name of the bidder and a total bid amount from this bidder.
Okay.
Evan's gonna open it up. We should see the bid table in an Excel format. Okay, it's popping up on the screen now. So, our bidder is Granite Excavation, and they've got a total bid amount of $556,147.
Okay.
Need some time?
Yes, the evaluation team will need some time to evaluate this bid, and we would like to request this be tabled for award to the May 10th, 2022, open business meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Accept the motion?
I'll move to table the award of bid 22056, Ada County Landfill North Ravine Cell Topsoil Stripping to May 10th, 2022.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll now take up licenses and catering permits, et cetera.
Chair, I move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including eight catering permits, two new licenses, two license transfers, and 55 license renewals, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We'll now take up licenses and catering permits, et cetera.
Chair, I move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including eight catering permits, two new licenses, two license transfers, and 55 license renewals, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Okay. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
I do have a question for our staff. Did we check out the loose screw beer company in detail?
There may be a few loose screws in there, but I think they're fine.
Okay. In that event, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We have with us today our distinguished clerk, Mr. Phil McGrane.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Give us an update.
Update, as of an hour and 20 minutes ago, early voting started. All the locations are up and running. I got a report from Saul about an hour ago, so things are underway. Friday is the deadline, Friday at 5:00 PM specifically, is the deadline to request an absentee ballot for any of those wanting to vote by absentee, so we'll be sending out some information on that. But, really, a lot of focus on the election. Tomorrow's two weeks out, so.
You had a lot of requests for absentees?
We, slightly more than what we would in a typical, so set aside the 2020, because that...
That was different, can't count that.
Yeah, can't count that. So, it's on track, it's like slightly above, which I think is more a reflection of the population increase.
Population, yeah.
There has been an uptick just recently in absentees, because a number of campaigns have sent out. So, I know Crepo has one out that he sent to a whole bunch of folks, and some of the other legislative candidates have sent absentee pushes. And that usually, usually where we see the biggest increase in absentees is those, you know, pre-filled-out cards that people get in the mail. We had some calls on one that went out a little over a week ago. A bunch of the news outlets called, because I can't remember what the name of the group was, but it looked generic. It looked government-y, but it wasn't from us, and people were wondering if it was official. I said, it wasn't official, it wasn't from us, but it met the standards for us to accept it, so it wasn't, and it came directly back to us. So, I didn't see any problem with it, but, yeah.
Would it look government-y?
Yeah, you know what I mean. Boring and black and white. Yeah.
What are all the early voting locations?
We have Boise City Hall, the Elections Office, Meridian City Hall, and then we do have the mobile voting unit. It'll spend most of its time out in, I think, two days in Kuna, two days in Starr, I think Garden City, and then a couple of locations. I know Micron one day, so you're kind of outlining spaces to catch where the main locations are.
Is the schedule for the voting truck on the website?
Yeah, it's all been up since beginning of April, so we made sure to let people know. And information, where to find that information, was on the postcard that went out to all registered voters. And we got good feedback in terms of the postcard going out. I think that was a really good thing to do, especially, one of the biggest, I would say, I mean, this is no surprise to you guys, because you guys are aware of it more than anybody else, the biggest question uncertainty is redistricting, right? People are like, you know, I answered some questions a couple of weeks ago, where someone's like, hey, I got the wrong ballot, I'm in District 21, not District 22, and it's like, well, no, you were in District 21, now you're in 22, right? So, a lot of changes between the precincts and the legislative districts.
You have very many questions on, you changed my polling place.
So far, I don't think so, but we're also not quite there yet, right? My guess is that that will be a bigger challenge as we get close to Election Day, because...
Well, I got a couple of calls.
Yeah, yeah.
I've always voted here, why do I go here? I just call Phil McGrane.
Yeah. There's just more, more places.
The polling guy with the glasses.
Exactly. There's just more locations now. You know, we've expanded the number significantly.
Yeah. Well, we had this for, I mean, you need precincts.
That way, no one's getting, shouldn't it, you know, you hear about long lines in other states and the challenges they face, and we just don't have that here, so it's a good thing.
Well, I like my change in polling place, closer to my house.
You're welcome.
I think you should do another commercial.
Yeah.
And add a cow on one side, a steering, a chainsaw on the other, with your glasses.
You'd be surprised, the advice, I guess, so.
Open this.
Do you know how to use a chainsaw?
I do. And I wear glasses all the time.
And you should wear protective goggles.
There you go. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. I'll entertain a motion on the Claims Journal.
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated April 29th, 2022.
Second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. May have a motion on Personnel Actions.
I move to approve the Personnel Actions as listed on the agenda, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's Office.
I'll second that.
Okay.
So our, uh, our bidder is Granite Excavation, and they've got a total bid amount of $556,147.
Okay.
Needs some time.
Uh, yes, the evaluation team will need some time to evaluate this, uh, bid, and we would, uh, like to request this be tabled for award to the May 10th, 2022 Open Business Meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Accept the motion.
I'll move to table the award of bid 22056, Ada County Landfill North Ravine Cell Topsoil Stripping to May 10th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Uh, those in favor say aye, aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you.
All right.
Uh, we have change order number one, Courthouse Camera and Security Door Upgrade Project Number 2021 Phase 2. A change order. Do we have any, any discussion or, uh, clarification?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, that is for the Courthouse Camera Security Door Project. Those that's are not required, and it is a
Well, that's a good deal, isn't it? Okay, uh, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve change order number one, Courthouse Camera Security Door Upgrade Project 2021-Phase 2, as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Uh, all those in favor say aye, aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, we'll now take up licenses and, uh, catering permits, et cetera.
Chair, move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including eight catering permits, two new licenses, two license transfers, and 55 license renewals, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Okay. Do we have a second, the motion?
Second.
I do have a question for our staff. Did we check out the, uh, Loose Screw Beer Company, uh, in detail?
There may be a few loose screws in there, but I think they're fine.
Okay. In that event, uh, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. We have with us today our distinguished clerk, Mr. Phil McGrane.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Give us an update.
Um, update, uh, as of an hour and 20 minutes ago, early voting started. Uh, all the locations are up and running. I got a report from Saul about an hour ago, so, uh, things are underway. Friday is the deadline, Friday at 5:00 PM specifically, is the deadline to request an absentee ballot for any of those wanting to vote by absentee, so we'll be sending out some information on that. Um, but it really, a lot of focus on the election. Tomorrow's two weeks out, so.
You had a lot of requests for absentees?
We, uh, slightly more than what we would in a typical, so set aside the 2020, because that
That was different, can't count that.
Yeah, can't count that. Um, so it's on track, it's like slightly above, which I think is more a reflection of the population increase. Um, there has been a, an uptick just recently in absentees, uh, because a number of campaigns have sent out. So I know Crepo has one out, uh, that he sent to a whole bunch of folks, and some of the other local legislative candidates have sent absentee pushes, and that usually, usually where we see the biggest, uh, increase in absentees is those, you know, pre-filled out cards that people get in the mail. Uh, we had some calls on one that went out a little over a week ago. Um, a bunch of the news outlets called, because I can't remember what the name of the group was, but it looked generic, it looked government-y, but it wasn't from us, and people were wondering if it was official. I said it, it wasn't official, it wasn't from us, but it met the standards for us to accept it, so it wasn't, and it came directly back to us, so I didn't see any problem with it, but, yeah.
Would it look government-y?
Yeah, you know what I mean, boring and black and white, yeah.
What are all the, uh, early voting locations?
Um, we have a Boise City Hall, the Elections Office, Meridian City Hall, and then we do have the mobile voting unit. Uh, it'll spend, uh, most of its time out, and I think, uh, two days in Kuna, two days in Star, um, I think Garden City, and then a couple of locations. I know Micron one day, so you kind of outlining spaces to catch where the main locations are.
Or is the schedule for the voting truck on the website?
Yeah, it's all been up since beginning of April, so we made sure to let people know, and information, the, where to find that information was on the postcard that went out to all registered voters. And I, and we got good feedback in terms of the postcard going up, so I think that was a, a really good thing to do, especially, one of the biggest, I would say, I mean, this is no surprise to you guys, because you guys are aware of it more than anybody else, the biggest question uncertainty is, um, redistricting, right? People like, uh, you know, I answered some questions a couple of weeks ago, um, where someone's like, hey, I got the wrong ballot, I'm in District 21, not District 22, and it's like, well, no, you were in District 21, now you're in 22. Right? So a lot of changes between the precincts and the legislative districts.
You have very many questions on, you changed my polling place.
So far, I don't think so, but we're also not quite there yet, right? My guess is that that will be a bigger challenge as we get close to Election Day, because
I got a couple of calls.
Yeah, yeah.
I've always voted here, why do I go here? I just call Phil McGrane.
Yeah. There's just more, more place.
The guy with the glasses.
Exactly. There's just more locations now, you know, we've expanded the number significantly.
Yeah, well, we had this for How many new precincts?
No one's getting, shouldn't it, you know, you hear about long lines in other states and the challenges they face, we just don't have that here, so it's a good thing.
Well, I like my changing polling place, closer to my house.
You're welcome.
Okay.
I think you should do another commercial.
Yeah.
And add a cow on one side, a steering, a chainsaw on the other, with your glasses.
You'd be surprised the advice, I guess, so.
Do you know how to use a chainsaw?
I do. And I wear glasses all the time.
And you should wear protective goggles.
There you go. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. I'll entertain a motion on the Claims Journal.
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated April 29th, 2022.
Second that.
Okay, uh, you've heard the motion. Uh, all those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion on Personnel Actions?
I move to approve the Personnel Actions as listed on the agenda, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's Office.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard a motion. Uh, those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay, we next have, uh, a report from our assessor, who is not here, but Brad, you're going to give a report?
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners. Pop's not available today, but I just want to let you know that our staff is diligently working. During 200,000 assessment notices will be issued. There's seen some pretty large increases. Uh, right now, our tentative numbers are about 25%, average change on the commercial. We are working on a, an insert, which will be focused on exemptions, to kind of help, you know, you'll have the tax, you know, be able to extend taxes and overall, it's going pretty good, and I know how to run a chainsaw.
Good. Good.
Any, any questions?
I don't have any questions. Any questions from the Board?
Another year where it skyrocketed the values, 33%, wow.
Unfortunately, we are starting to see some signs of feeling, but unfortunately, our meeting dates are January 1st, so that's what we're focused.
Yep.
A lot of the same as last year, so.
It's a lot of your work cut out for you.
Yep. All right, thank you. Uh, we, uh, now have with us our distinguished treasurer, Beth Mon.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
I see you made it back.
Do you know how to use a chainsaw?
I do not.
Well.
You know, you can't do a commercial.
Phil can teach you.
Okay. Spare time.
Okay. All right, Beth, do you have, get any some good information for us?
Um, yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I am pleased to let you know that we are nearly caught up with the tax cancellations slash adjustments. Uh, and the reason that's significant is because we are in the final preparations to issue the second half reminder notices for the taxes next week. So next week, we'll be preparing, these are the notices for the second half of the 2021 tax notices, so it can kind of get confusing for the taxpayer, because we send the 2021 second half notice, and then a few weeks later to get the 2022 assessment. Um, but yeah, just heads up that those will be going out in about a week. Yeah, so it's nothing new for the taxpayer. Um, it's a reflection of the tax bill that we sent last November, so it's just a statement of what's the outstanding balance.
When you make the adjustments, do you make the adjustments to their, uh, second half?
Correct, Miss Chair, we actually make it for the full year, and then divide it, yeah, so it's reflected on that, so that's why it was important, we processed all of those cancellations before those are generated, um, yeah.
Yes.
What's the due date, June?
Um, well, it's June 20th, unless that's a holiday, um, or weekend, and this year that is Juneteenth. Um, so the tax due date will be June 21st.
And then what percentage again have we collected so far? High 90s, right?
Oh, I'd have to confirm, it, it is high 90s.
That was a good sign. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, we now have, uh, several items from Development Services. Uh, we'll take up first one, uh, Application 201900651-S.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board, we appreciate the opportunity to be able to, to, uh, present three final plats for your consideration today. Um, Development Services staff has, uh, reviewed all three items under new business item number nine, and finds that they comply with all applicable conditions of approval, as well as state code, and recommend that the Board authorize the Chair to sign and stamp the final plats.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, I know this is just administrative, but, um, I'd like to ask a couple of questions on the condominiums. Can you give us the location and the number of units there?
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, this particular condominium is located on the west side of Meridian Road, just north of Amity. There was an existing, uh, it started out as an office complex, and, uh, they ended up converting one of the condominium units into a church, and that church had some success, and they needed to expand, so they've added a seventh condominium unit for this church.
That's interesting.
It's a little different.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And then the Broden subdivision is how many units?
Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, that has seven residential units.
And then the last of the Charlesworth, is this the last that we'll be seeing?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, I believe this is the last, this is going to be 40, 40 units that will be coming onboard, they're, they're townhouse style units.
And what's the location, remind me again?
This is the Lake Hazel Five Mile.
Are any of these in the southwest area of drilling concern?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, I am not 100% sure. I believe that the Broden one may be, it's in between Star and, um, actually, sorry, not Star, uh, in between Meridian and Kuna, on the west, west edge, so.
Does Development Services have a process in place where they send out a, a notice, um, that, to folks that are in that area? Especially if they're going to be drilling, they have to meet those special requirements?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, a notice to the property owners themselves. The only thing that I can think of is during the approval process for the subdivision, that would probably come up.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, let's take a look at that, and just make, making sure that folks know that that's been declared in southwest area of drilling concern, and with that comes a requirement that they have to go down certain amount of depth in terms of feet, plus, you know, past the clay part of it, and then they have to be, have the extra casing on them. And I'm not sure if we're doing, giving notice on that, or if that's, is that would be Central District Health?
And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, I'd have to take a look, I believe IDWR would, would be that standard when they get their permit to drill the well.
Okay, okay.
Okay. We didn't, do we need a motion on each of these, or do one motion suffice?
Each of them.
Okay, let's take a motion on the first one.
Yes, I'll move to approve application number 201900651-S, Charlesworth subdivision number four, and authorize the Chair to sign this and stamp the final plat on behalf of the Board.
Second that.
Hey, you've heard the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, and then we'll take up, uh, the Broden subdivision.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve application number 201901818-S, Broden subdivision, and authorize the Chair to sign and stamp the final plat on behalf of the Board.
Second that.
Okay, is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Carries. We'll now take up the Jessica Condominium Project, amendments number one.
Mr. Chair, move to approve application number 2021129-SUR, Jessica Condominium's Project Amendment Number One, and authorize the Chair to sign and stamp the final plat on behalf of the Board.
Second.
You've heard the motion. All those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, we now have, uh, minutes of the, uh, Open Business Meeting and the indigent hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We now have grant number 2203A, a grant application to the Bureau of Justice Assistance State Criminal Alien Assistance Program for reimbursement to jails for housing qualified aliens. Uh, is there any discussion?
Nolan was going to be here, right? Nolan, um, yeah, he's up on.
Nolan, do you have something you want to tell us?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, I'm just here to answer questions. Uh, in the past, there was an optional field that, uh, they were telling us would be required, and as soon as that field's required, we won't be able to apply for the grant anymore. Since it remains optional, we're applying for it again this year.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, question, how do they define qualified alien?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, uh, the qualified aliens are undocumented criminal aliens, so, uh, they are ones where they don't have documentation, they've committed a misdemeanor felony offense, and they've been incarcerated for at least four days.
How many do we get on average, do you know?
Uh, I think we had 31 this past time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
How much is the grant for?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, uh, we don't know, they have a algorithm that figures it out, and they'll provide that amount to us once they grant it.
Okay, you just need to get it in this week, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve grant number 2203-A, as identified on the agenda, and authorize the completion and online submission of grant number 2203A, and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, we have some interim agreements at Expo Idaho. Um, may I have a motion?
Move to approve the two interim event agreements and two concessionaire agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All those in favor say aye, aye.
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 Motion carries. We have, uh, motion, uh, we have the Parks and Water Raise, uh, an education event center agreement. Uh, do we have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve, uh, the One Barber Park Education and Event Center Agreement, as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we have a number of agreements. Uh, is there any discussion on any of the agreements?
Scott, are you here for anything? You're just here for just having
Any of these agreements, do we have questions on them? Lots of copier agreements.
Lots of copier agreements, yeah.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the 30 agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. On miscellaneous, we have a waiver of a noise ordinance for Ben Neder, 52922, for a graduation party. Um, any discussion on this one? Is Mr. Neder, oh, Mr. Neder is here, okay? Yes.
Available to answer questions about the
Okay.
Bring him up and put him on the record, since he's here?
Well, he just said he's here to answer questions. Where is your party?
He wants to go.
No. Oh, it's at your home.
It's his high school graduates, right?
Oh.
Yeah, what high school?
Ambrose School.
Oh.
Oh, nice, okay, excellent, good.
Yeah.
Well, you're a brave soul, hosting a party for 50, 60 high school grads.
Yeah.
Don't expect to get any sleep, right?
Well, yeah, it'll be great.
Well, good, well, congratulations, 7 to, uh, to 12, all right?
I think this is the first noise ordinance
Waiver.
Waiver that I've gotten since I've been here, for a party, but, um, is that, does this go through the clerk's office, Phil? How does somebody apply for a, the noise ordinance waiver, and then, is there a requirement that they have to post it anywhere? You know? I was just curious.
I'm just trying to be a good neighbor.
That's right, well, that's good.
Might be a good idea, I don't know what we issue you, if it's a permit or something, but if you put it on your door, or put it on your mailbox, so just in case some neighbor comes up, at least they can read it before they call the cops on you.
We're, we're going to be in the backyard, so I figured if someone did walk out, I would post it on the door. I'll not have an arranger, it's just
All right.
Sports, we have a swimming pool, it's just a fun night.
First kids, all right, well, good. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the temporary waiver from noise ordinance limits for Ben Neder, graduation party to be held on May 29th, 2022, from 7:00 PM to 12:00 AM, and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Uh, you've heard the motion. Is there further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye, aye.
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 Good luck.
Give the, uh, your graduates their, our congratulations. Chikni Ambrose, that's a nice school. Okay, I believe we are, uh, in recess. Well, good morning. Uh, today is Monday, May the 2nd. The time is, uh, 9:44. Uh, the Board of Commissioners, sitting as the Board of Emergency Medical Services District, is in session to conduct its weekly Open Business Meeting. All three Commissioners are present. Also with us, if you can identify yourself for the record.
John Blake Paramedics.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
May I have a motion on the Claims Journal?
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated April 29th, 2022, regarding EM April 29th, 2022 regarding EMS expenditures.
Second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have a motion on the minutes?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have personnel actions, two step increases and EMS pay plan and one promotion. I'll entertain a motion on the personnel actions.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we're looking for an EMS update. Do you have a good update?
There's not much of one. We spent most of our time last week messaging out and discussing with crews the proposed schedule change that I'm sure Sean was talking with you about.
Sure.
That took a lot of time. The only other thing I have is that I was made aware this morning that National Association of Emergency Medical Technicians puts out a quarterly newsletter and our PPE experience, your PPE experience that you participated in, made the cut. And there's a picture of the three of you in that publication.
And we have those blues on?
Yes, you do. Thumbs up, all nine yards.
Can you give us a copy of that?
I'm sure I can.
All right, yes, I can. Anything else?
That's it.
Are we doing many, many halls on the, on anybody with COVID?
I don't know. I don't know that our COVID numbers have gone up. I haven't looked at, I haven't looked at those numbers in a couple of weeks.
All right.
So, John, you're going to continue to try to socialize the new schedule over the, how many months before it actually takes place?
January 1. We intend January 1, on or about. So we will sync that schedule with others that are on a similar schedule. But it will be on about, on or about January 1.
Okay.
All right. Do you have anything else for us?
That's it.
Good. We'll be in recess. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess we'll...